I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings, law notification, adopt the agenda. If you all please stand with me for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is staff and student recognitions. A is fall sports recognitions.
Good evening. Mr. Pentec is actually in the Dells right now at the Athletic Directors Conference, so he asked me to fill in for a bit. Glad to see a lot of wonderful athletes here. So I'm actually going to ask all the athletes to come on up here. And what I'd like you to do is step forward to the microphone, tell us your name, and then tell us the great accomplishment that you had this year in this fall season. Okay?
Hi, I'm Jenna Dun- Hi, I'm Jenna Dundas. I made it to state for tennis.
Hi, I'm Nicole Beckman. Okay. And I made it to state for swimming. And I'm a state champion.
I'm Grace Radke, and I made it to state for swimming.
I'm Bella Smith, and I was second in the state for diving.
I'm Kaymila Held, and I made it to state for swimming and diving.
I'm Rachel Lenz, and I made to state as a freshman.
Just because my girls don't talk so much, so I'm sorry this is going to be bragging rights for me. I'm George, I'm the coach for the swimming and diving team, well, just the swim team. And Cheryl is our coach for diving, because I can't do anything but a cannonball. But these are part of our girls for our state team this year. We took seventh overall in state. Last year we took ninth, and we did a fantastic job. Nicole Beckman is a four-time 100 flyer at state, and she's been trailing one girl all those four years. And this year she beat the girl at state and is our 100 butterfly state champion. She holds the fastest record in Whitno history for the 100 butterfly, and she's on the top six record board for the 200 IM. She's our only senior we have on the state team this year. The other girls that are here and not here are all sophomores and freshmen. So we have a very young team. Grace Radke qualified in two individual events for state, 200 freestyle and 100 butterfly. She is the fifth fastest 200 freestyler in Whitno history as freshman, and she's looking to improve on that. She's also on two relays. Bella Smith is a sophomore. She is number two all-time record holder in Whitno history for diving, and second at state. She was fourth last year, fourth, made improvement, second at state. And Kaymila is a freshman. She made it state on the 400 free relay and in diving. She started diving a little bit late this year, never dove before, and in two weeks she had all her 11 dives, and now she took fourth in state for diving. And then Rachel Lenz is another freshman, went to state in the 100 backstroke, the 200 IM, and then two relays. And with Grace and Rachel, very few freshmen get to qualify for state in two individual events and two relays, and both of them have qualified this year. And just an awesome job. And cap off the season, it was a fantastic season. We start off, our second invite we had out of eight teams, we took first, the next invite right after that, all nine teams, we took first. We won JV conference, we won varsity conference the following day, and took third at sectionals by two points, I do believe it was, and then went to state and took seventh overall with some tremendous achievement. So these girls, for what they have accomplished, for, sorry, I have to throw this plug out there, for the pool that we use, no diving board or anything, and we just have a stellar team with everything that we use. So these girls have done a fantastic job. And the parents, huge supporting background for parents, too. So with that, I'm going to step down, unless you girls want to talk some more? You should see them at practice, they talk a lot, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't like to go home and enjoy your evening, we can pause and then go forward. You don't have to stay. Okay, now we'll go on to B, the Spectrum Awards. So Lisa and Logan.
And?
And Flash.
Yes. So I get to give awards. So last Thursday, Logan and I attended the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association convention, in which we were notified shortly before that that our district received three certificates of excellence for our communication efforts. So we're just going to give them to Logan, as he officially has them from last Thursday. One is for our Whitno window, our community newsletter, so that won a certificate of excellence. Also, an award of excellence for our referendum campaign, the communication for our stakeholders and everything that went with our referendum campaign. And our third award of excellence goes to our social media campaign of the new Flash makeover last year. And so Flash, here, this will let you share on that, because that was quite the adventure for Flash, too. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Logan. Thank you for everything you do, and thanks, Flash. We don't have a, do we have a student council?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do? Okay, I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry. Okay, so four is Whitno High School Student Council report. So if you have a seat up here? Yeah, we can.
Okay, hi, I'm Olivia Hawk. I'm the president of student council.
I'm Caitlin Frank, and I'm the treasurer of student council. This year, we did haunted hallways on October 24th. We had received $697 and 11 cents in donations. Of that, we combined it with our homecoming funds and donated 1,350 to the charity lunch fund for Whitno. Next year, we are looking to utilize the whole building, so have a larger route. With that, we will also need more people to participate with the haunted hallways. For the littler kids, the first half an hour, we usually do like a PG 13, where all the people are like scaring less. This year, yeah, PG rather. Next year, we are looking to do a more of a haunted trick or treat, because there are kids who are afraid to go through the PG section right now.
So the blood drive this year, this was last week, we had 38 units of blood donated from 49 students, so we officially can save 114 lives. And the only thing that could have been a little bit better was we could have had more donations. We've had more in the past, but the past few years haven't been great, so we're just looking to recruit more for the spring drive.
What type of advertisement do you do for the blood drive?
We send out an email, and, well, because the announcements aren't the same as the previous years, I think that was really a big part of how to get the word out there. And now that's gone, so it kind of like fell through in that way. So I personally would like to put it in the announcements and maybe put posters around school. I think we had, yeah, we had some around school, but maybe get the word out there more, put them on the TVs in the front, stuff like that.
And using the social media accounts, too, that's a way to get it out.
Looking forward, we are looking to work closer with the administration to become a voice for students. We will do this by hosting a listening session during Valentine Fun Tuesdays, where anyone is welcome to come, and there will be one student council representative from each grade attending.
We're also looking to create a combined Whitno Student Council and DECA newsletter to actually get the word out there for students. The first one that we're working on currently is just about, it involves me, who is the senate president, and Charles Riege, who is the DECA president. And we're just looking to tell kids, like, who we are, what we do, and like our goals for the school, so they really know, like, what we're doing. And then the final thing is winter formal. So in the past, we don't really have much attendance for winter formal, and we have more for homecoming. So we're looking to change it to like a spring fun night. The name is not official yet. But that would include, like, games, you know, video games in one room, board games in another, you know, all that kind of stuff. And then there would be a dance part, and then maybe a movie playing in the other room. So we'd really like kids to be involved in that more than just a dance, because that'll be a better turnout.
Any questions?
So the funds for the haunted hallways that goes to charity for kids that can't afford lunch, or what is that?
Correct. So as of right now, some of the people who work at lunch are paying their own money towards other children's lunches. We really wanted to use that money to fund their lunches, instead of having them pay out of pocket.
So, and then you're going to work closer with the administration, become a voice for the students. Has that started yet?
No, not yet. We're looking to incorporate that into our meetings, I'm pretty sure. So like, I think Tolson said he would work with the students, you know, let them have a voice. And we haven't done that yet, but we're going to start soon.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you both for coming. Okay, on to five discussion and action items. A is personnel recommendations. Does anyone have any questions? Not, then I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to B, bid packet number one for subcontractors at Hales Corners Elementary. Can I take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Quick question for you. So criteria more than just basis on this? Because it looked like it was the low bid for all of them, we just want to see what else went into it.
My name's Dan Davis, I'm from CD Schmitt, this is Dan Durlock, or so you're going to get one of either of us at every meeting to go through some of these things. Before we kind of dive in, if we could, we'd like to back up-
Is he also from CD Schmitt?
We're both from CD Schmitt, yeah. And both DD and our middle names are both Joseph, too, so it's kind of confusing. So we want to maybe back up a little bit. So the reason we're here tonight is that when we, if you look at, when we really want to try to get the work done and move into new spaces at the end of next summer, the design processes progressed such that some of the, some of the design is done, and it's gone out to bid and put out on the street, and some is continuing. And so we're going through and awarding bids as we need them in priority order. And so that's why we're here tonight, for the first bunch of these. And you'll see, I think in your packet, there's a list of those awards that'll come up soon. So as the design progresses, we'll be back to get some more of those. So Dan leads the operations team. I help with the pre-construction myself, and I, as the principal in charge, will be involved in the project as we go through. So we go through, and we've done budget checks, and we look like we're in pretty good shape on the budget. So that's, that's all good news. And so these are the first bids that we've gone out to the community with. So that's why we're here tonight. So with awarding these tonight, hopefully then we can start the work very shortly, in order to continue on and get done by next summer, which is a little sooner than I think maybe some of you had anticipated at the onset of your project, or prior to referendum. So that's all good. It's a, we did, we kind of looked at the schedule again to make sure that, in order, if we start now and finish earlier, we save a bunch of money, and, and avoid inflation, really is what we're doing. And then move into those spaces, maybe even a school year earlier than what was planned originally. So these are the first six bid packages, or what we call work categories, that have gone out to bid. And Dan will tell you a little bit more about sort of the process, so you can understand. I think maybe we'll answer and reverse what some of your questions are about the process. So why don't you go ahead and talk about the bidding process and pre-qualification a little bit?
All right, so we started with providing Todd Iverson, District of, a list of bidders for each of the four categories. We reviewed that list, and had a list and tracked it and some fit. We receive the bids. Once we receive them, we usually scope the low two, just to confirm that we're capturing all the scope that's required, and we're not missing something that could be a problem later. We then submit those qualified numbers to the district, but in the fall conference, and there's this. We know what, kind of who our recommendation is, and then let the district decide on all the team players going forward. We do have a pre-qualification process at CD Schmitt. All of our contractors bidding qualified, it's a check to make sure they have the bonding capacity that they're bidding for, to check on their safety records, also to make sure they have the financial wherewithal to complete the work they're bidding, and they have the manpower to do it. So the contractors that we're receiving bids from, we know they'll be able to complete the job in the end. Local participation, that was something that kind of came up in our interview. We did hold a project information session about four weeks ago here. We invited about 75 companies, kind of within or around district boundaries, just to let them know of the project and the bidding schedule. About 10 came to the meeting, another five to 10 kind of showed interest via email and phone conversations after the invites went out. We expect to have a lot more participation as we get into the finishes and the mechanical aspects. This first round of site work, there's, there's not a whole lot of local participation that we've found. But we did ask on our bid form, one, is your company located within the district? Two, is your company located in the surrounding district? And three, is there anybody that would be working on this project that lives and is a taxpayer in the district? There wasn't a huge overwhelming numbers for these bids here, but we do expect more as we get into finishes and the mechanical trades. And then just quick on schedule, so Hales Corners addition, we're looking to start by the end of this month, kind of after Thanksgiving to mobilize, get in the ground through the winter, and plans to turn over the addition and much of the renovation by, for mid-August for next school year. The staff parking lot that is going to sit where the old building gets removed, that turnover will happen probably late September. It'll, it'll lag a little bit, just for the time to abate the building as it comes down, get rid of the building, and then do the parking lot. So that'll, we'll kind of break it off separate. But the bulk of the parking lot in addition should be ready for, for the school, school year next year. High school renovations, we're planning to start in March, and start working on some of the tech ed and the other areas in that wing. And then finish that up, get as much of that done before summer. And then there's a few toilet remodels and whatnot for ADA upgrades that'll happen through the summer when nobody's in the building. Try and get as much of that out of the way before the summer hits. Same thing for the, the middle school. There's a bulk of science rooms kind of in the middle of the building that are beginning renovated. That one, we're targeting like a mid-March start and a summer finish. And then Edgerton Elementary, summer of 19 is basically going to happen, all in that summer, with the exception of the fire alarm. It's getting a new fire alarm system throughout the building. We're going to look to rough in a lot of that work on a second shift, starting March until June, just to get a lot of that work out of the way. So once everybody's out, just kind of just plug it in, turn it on, and kill the old one. Hopefully that helps, going to shed a little light on, on the project and the process that we went through. We can jump right into the work categories, the six that we're looking at right now. Concrete foundations, this is just for the addition at Hales Corners, and it's just the footings and foundation walls. The slab-on-grade and other miscellaneous slab infills related to the remodeling will be in the bid package, too. That'll be coming out later this month. Masonry structure, this is the load-bearing masonry walls that will form, the exterior walls of the addition, as well as the interior corridor walls. Steel, that's going to be the structural steel.
Hold on, can we, can we look at that bid right there?
Sure.
It's about 125 less than what was budgeted, 90, 90,000 less than your number.
Sure.
That, that's a, it's a big span there. And usually, sometimes, when there's that big amount, someone forgot something.
And we, we met with Superior, and we reviewed both the, the concrete and the, and the masonry work, and everything that they've told us, they have everything captured. I know they're aggressive on this job. They have a lot of key people and individuals that they need to keep working through the winter months. So I think that had a lot to do with it.
The question I had on this particular one is that the list of contractors that were invited that chose not to bid was also very long. So what would be some of the reasons that they wouldn't have wanted to have bid on the project, or at least that many wouldn't have wanted to have bid?
Timing of the, time that the project gets in place and the current workload that they already have. A lot of these contractors, as they're looking at, at projects to bid, they have a target of time that they're looking to find projects in, and sometimes ones that come up right away, they can't make the adjustment fast enough to-
It's pretty quick around, so we're starting right away. And so if you didn't have the manpower set up for the next, you know, two months, you really couldn't make the calls. And I think that's why our concrete group is probably a little bit not so aggressive as well.
The steel scope is just related to the Joyce and Deck, and a few structural members that will kind of get a roof over our head. Earthwork is the site demo, grading and excavation, backfill of the additions. Landscaping, trees, bushes, mulch for the new parking lots and site. And the site utility scope is the bulk, bulk of it is storm. There's a little bit of sanitary and a little bit of water me. Bulk of it's storm work.
Any idea why a couple of those were significantly, where the low bid was significantly greater than what was budgeted? And seeing how this is kind of the, the smallest package of the first three packages, you know, a 20% overrun or something like that, and certain other key things could, you know, later on, could, could really cause problems. So any idea why?
The earthwork was one that probably had the biggest delta. And when we budgeted the drawings, it was at the DD level, which is design development. The pond, I guess, I wouldn't call it pond, I'd call it a water-
Please don't.
Detention basin.
Detention, yep.
They had a footprint of the anticipated size of that, and, and that's what we kind of estimated, did our budget on. Upon final calculations and finishing up all the stormwater management calculations that they had to do, it doubled in size. So it has a pretty big footprint. And, and that particular item had, is basically all earthwork for the cut, the rubber liner that goes in and all the stone.
So that's all based on the amount of hardcover, right?
The square.
Yeah, it's all a calculation with the engineers that hadn't really done the detail.
So they hadn't really looked at the hardcover. Are we having to, is that also going to be larger? Do we have to incorporate the existing hardcover in that calculation? Like, I imagine our current hardcover is, is grandfathered. But, but now that we're adding hardcover, do we have to account for the entire amount of hardcover on our property?
Yes, yeah, it goes back and does the calculation on the whole site. Because if you're just third morning in the acre, you essentially start over.
Yeah.
And then you fall into the requirements for both quality, quality of the runoff, as well as the quantity. So yeah, we were, you're kind of stuck, and you have to bring it up all the code.
Thanks. But we, we're not necessarily anticipating, I mean, the whole thing was D and D, right? So are we, are there other areas where we could get surprised by large deltas on the, in the, not in our favor?
There's going to be wins and losses as we go through.
Yeah, you can see ups and downs for various reasons. Sometimes, when we do our estimates, sometimes, say, some of the site concrete or the, the stone under the concrete is in the concrete budget number, and when we bid it out, we ask the earthwork to do that. And so some of the times, that, it moves, because the scope of work shifts from a work category to another. And, and sometimes in earthwork, it's not unusual to see big swings, just because who's got an available dump site closer. But we'll try to explain those, and we try to go through that, too, to make sure we have some level of comfort that we're not going to get surprised later with, with changes.
Thanks.
So I, if you guys have the packet, I don't know if you want to cover each work category line by line, but for concrete foundations, as we mentioned, Superior Masonry Builders was the lowest qualified bidder, even outbid us. So we recommend to them. Also, their lowest qualified bidder for masonry, we did ask if there was a savings to combine the packages. They, they offered a $5,000 discount, $5,000 discount for, they were both awarded, so that savings is included in, in these numbers here. As far as the steel goes, Cardinal Fabricating is the lowest qualified bidder. He did mention inner scope review, he is an alum to Whitno High School. And earthwork, it's basically between Rams and Vite. Rams is lowest by almost 30, $20,000 there. Vite has office here in, in New Berlin, but their main office is in Minnesota. New Berlin Grading's in, located in New Berlin area as well, kind of close by, but they were kind of out in left field. Landscaping, external landscaping for 114.9. EcoBuild, which is the union division of David J. Frank, was at next at 133,000. Site Utilities, Bowman and Vic Plumbing, they're out of Brookfield, was lowest, and Cornerstone was a close second. They're, I'm not sure exactly where, what town they're in, but I know they're around as well. D. F. Tomassini is third there in Sussex. So a budget summary to date, we're right where we need to be.
As close as you can get, yeah.
For $1.3 million worth of work. And our, our next meeting in January 14th, we'll have the bulk of the project, that's about $6.2 million worth of work, spread out over 27 work categories. So it'll take a little bit longer than this one, but that's the bulk of it. We'll, we'll know, have a really good feel for where things are at after that meeting, because the other two sections after that, just remodeling at the middle high school, $2.6 million worth of work, and then to close things out, Edgerton's about a half a million. So next meeting, we'll have bulk of it under our belt and bid.
Any other questions about that process? This is kind of what you're going to see the next few months.
Anybody?
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for the information and time. So then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll be back with construction updates on a monthly basis.
Great, good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to six discussion and future action items, the Whitno High School Honors Program Class of 2022 with Lynn.
Lisa, I might need to get out of education.
Lisa, I might need to get out of education because I'm having a hard time saying the class of nineteen twenty, twenty-one, followed by the twenty twenty-two and the class of nineteen twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Yes, exactly. So, right, so by the time we start projecting into the future, I'm like, out of the discussion. So we want to talk a little bit tonight just for discussion and then we'll bring it back in the next round. We want to talk first about the honors program as we are going to roll it up with the class of twenty twenty-two. So we, with the onboarding of the freshman academy this year, we said we were going to start removing those sort of arbitrary honors titles from some of the classes because we couldn't in many cases determine what differentiated the honors from the regular curriculum piece. So in place of that, starting with freshman academy, we said we're going to bring on an honors program that students could opt into if they really want to go deeper or further with studies or community service projects or passion projects. This was going to be the program. That program is now up and running with the freshman academy. We have thirty-eight students that have opted into it and are into the honors programming, so to speak. And they are really taking charge of what they want to do as far as diving into certain topics, certain areas, community service or passion projects. And teachers are guiding them in that process, but they are largely determining sort of their own, their own goals and, and pathways in many cases. So we would like to talk about now rolling that up to sophomores because this group is going to be sophomores next year. We want to also have them have that same opportunity to continue with the honors program, so to speak. So discussion and questions around it tonight, right now, and then we'll bring it back for, for action the next time around. Right now, Charlie can speak a little bit to it too as far as freshman academy and what types of things they're doing. They've got the program set up that you earn credits toward the honors program. So students can say, this is the project I would like to engage in. And they have a kind of a little course catalog of how many credits or how many points they get for each particular project or service thing or passion project. A lot of it, they were, they are trying to hook to community and community service and a little bit more than just the confines of the four classroom walls.
So with this being a new program, is there like an evaluation point in it? Kind of like at the semester or at the end of the year where the students will have feedback, the teachers will have input to kind of say what's working, what's not, what they think is?
From the program standpoint, you're saying? Yes, yes. So then, and that's the whole thing right now is we're not going to exactly put every nickel and dime piece in place for the honors for sophomores because we really want to see how this is going to play out for the rest of the year for freshmen. Right now, we're thinking it's going to have the same format or close to the same format, but we really want to see how this plays out. We also want to get student input as to how this is serving them, parent input as to what they think that students are getting out of this or not getting out of it before we really go tight with the formula for sophomore program.
So is, has there been any early indications at this point of how it's going?
It's pretty early in the process. Charlie, do you want to talk about any of that?
Sure. Yeah, officially, we rolled it out in October. So the first whole month of September and most of October really was still just getting to know the students and helping students identify if they want to be part of the program or not. Now that we're into it, I know the different departments in freshman academy, they're, they're pushing different honors program units. So in English, they, they're reading The Hate U Give as one of their choice novels. Movie also just came out. So one of the honors credit pieces they can do is do a comparative analysis between the book and the movie and write that up and discuss that and have a, a presentation with that. I believe they have to do some slides with that. Similarly, they, they did a, a lab in biology and there was an extension for it. It was the egg lab, the frogs, the frog dissection lab. So they had to do some video around that and some extension around that. So really, we, we've just gotten to the early stages of offering up the options for students. As well, we were continuing to look at, as, as I know, I've spoken to some of the board members, how to bring more outside agencies in to work with our students as well.
And there was talk of we were going to be polling students and parents and saying, you know, what, what of this are we liking? Whether we, whether we walk away from it.
Yep.
And Ken, sorry. Another follow-up question I had is, is what are the limitations for number of students that can participate in it?
We didn't put any limit on it, so any, any student can say, I want to be a part of this.
Okay, so it's all within the same contained class? It's not like they get different instructors or?
Correct, correct, yep.
So how many students total and how many students are in the program?
There are about two hundred and twelve freshmen and thirty-eight are in the program.
Okay, and then it says here that the honors program will not provide additional credits, but will be indicated on a student's transcript. So I know that, you, you know, universities look at the transcripts and they look for honors things and AP things. But, but is, this isn't obviously going to be noted like in honors class, like honors classes were noted? Is it going to be recognizable to a university in the same kind of notable fashion that, I mean, will they understand what they're looking at? Because they understand what they're looking at when they see AP physics or honors chemistry on there. But will they understand what they're looking at the way this honors program participant is going to be annotated on there?
Yes, it's, it's our intention to have it clearly denotated on the transcript. Additionally, every time a transcript is sent, the school profile is also sent with it. And in that school profile, it, it outlines a little bit deeper of what we offer in terms of AP offerings, honors classes, things of that nature. So really, when a, when a college is looking at the transcript, they've got another piece of evidence that they can look at beyond just the transcript to, to understand a bit better about the program.
They may have to do some digging in order to?
They, they have to do digging now to see what classes we offer that are honors based. So they would have a better understanding. Do we offer honors classes outside of just mathematics? Do we offer honors classes for freshmen or for all four grades? So that, those are pieces that we have to outline on that school profile.
They won't have to go through extra steps if that's what you're thinking. Because part of what they do is go through that profile in conjunction with looking at the course offerings. So it's not like they have to go.
For each student?
Correct.
For each applicant to the university.
You did admissions counselor takes a group of high schools and they get to know those high schools and their profiles. So when they compare all the students from that high school for admissions, they know that did, you know, a school up north that only offers two AP classes, a student took two versus someone who might offer thirty and that student took two. Like they, they know that, right? So part of it is when you talk to universities, they have admission counselors that focus on high schools and then they take all the applicants from there to see how does that weigh into it.
And that's how they do that beyond the UW system as well?
Yeah, I mean, private universities, the whole panel of, yep, Big Ten and, I mean, that's part of it. No, different universities, like Elverno has a very different admissions processes. You know, they don't give grades and things like that. But for the most part, that's what they do is they get to know that high school to see, did the student take advantage of what was there in their choices that they made? So they do need to get to know the profiles. We have to provide an updated profile every year.
Good, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Just a comment, Ben. You said you're going to get a student and a parent input and then we should get teacher input as well.
Well, for sure, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, and in fact, they're, they're sort of meeting and inputting every week that they meet and saying, this is, this is great and this not so much, and we're going to leave that. And so that's sort of an ongoing, but for sure, they're going to have a large hand in that. I would add too that there are many districts in southeastern Wisconsin, but all over, that are really going to this academy format or a lot of like interdisciplinary mixing rather than teaching subjects in complete isolation. Though the learning is just much deeper when you can hook it to other things. So the whole looking for an honors program within a profile or looking for the academy experience within a profile is getting to be more and more common as we move through as well.
So how do you control the depth and the rigor if it comes to a passion project or if it comes to a community service project? Because given the memo, one of the aims was to, to also help kids at the higher end of our learning spectrum. Then what? I mean, not that I could, most of the kids on that end of the spectrum that I've met, I couldn't imagine them looking at it and saying, good, I'm just going to go do watercolors. I just, I don't see them doing that. But there's still content that, and rigor that is expected. So if it's a passion project or community service, how are you controlling that?
The freshman academy teachers, and Charlie can speak this too, but the freshman academy teachers are helping students, sort of guiding them through that process. So if they're saying, this is what I'm interested in, the teachers are then taking them and, and getting them to ask questions that are going to drive them a little bit deeper rather than just doing a bunch of surface level work. So they have some forms and things that they're vetting out to those students and having them do like little application forms. And, you know, and Jess can speak to this, she's part of freshman academy. So if you want to jump in, you know, and talk about it. That puts you on the spot. So if there's anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I understand the concern and I would say that what we're looking for is not, not more content, but a different application of things that kids are learning. So it's not just, look, I made a poster of the cars in the cell and you didn't ask me to do that. So that's extra and I get points now, right? It's more, how did you take that information that we learned and actually apply it to a service project or a passion project? You know, something that can, you know, that we can see outside of the classroom. And some of it might be more content. It might be attending, you know, a, a talk at UWM from a microbiologist and reflecting on that and creating something for your classmates. But we, we also have a rubric that's put together and it outlines, you know, the type of problem solving or whatever it might be that the kids are looking for. So those are concerned as well is you can't just make it pretty and say, you didn't ask me to do it, so it's extra. So that's definitely something that we're working with the kids to regulate, to talk about. What is, what is meaningful learning? And are you just looking for a handout, extra points, or are you really going to ask this stuff?
Other question?
Any other? Okay, great.
So then next, this will be a little bit more of a meaty subject.
Going on in the course proposals now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
You, yeah, you have to say it, sorry.
No, you're fine.
You're just a running meeting.
So formally, B is Whitno High School course proposals with Lynn Leroy, so.
Just really excited.
I know, I tell. They'll let me stay in your way.
Yeah. So you have in your, in your handouts, the, the running list of course proposals. The bulk of it is around science for tonight and we're going to start with the non-science piece. So the summary list, the first thing that you see there is something called Integrated American Studies. And again, as we have this freshman academy piece available for freshmen and teachers are working really diligently to make an interdisciplinary, create interdisciplinary experiences for students and get them to hook one set of learning to another, you know, instance or, or application. We really want to have something to offer the, this year's freshmen as sophomores. It's going to be a little bit different in that they are not all necessarily going to be part of this interdisciplinary class. They can still take a standalone English and a standalone social studies, but we would like to offer an integrated social studies and English experience, which again is pretty common throughout in, in many, many schools throughout the country. And those two subjects really fit very well together. So the Integrated American Studies would be one credit. It would be worth one English credit. It's also going to be worth, worth one social studies credit. It's going to be a bundled course, which will be a two-hour block, much like we're doing with freshman academy. So it's kind of like having an English and a social studies, but they're really going to work to be very interdisciplinary and work very tightly together. So the, the social studies, American studies, we can take in a whole bunch of different directions. And so the English department and the social studies department were really into the idea of taking a lot of things that could be American studies from American history to American contemporary and marrying that with English concepts and the teaching of, of English. So not, again, not all students would be in this automatically. They would choose if they liked the interdisciplinary approach of freshman academy, this is an option for them. Any questions on that?
Just in the, under the interest of unintended consequences, if you create like a two-hour class, is it going to, is there a potential to cause scheduling difficulties? Because it seems like the shorter the class, the more flexible you would have to move somebody's schedule around throughout the day to, you know, students' schedule around throughout the day to so they can get in all the classes they want. But if, if you, you know, to take it to the other extreme, if you have a four-hour class that would, you know, make it much harder to be, for them to be able to fit in all the stuff they want to take, not because of number of courses, but just because of, you know, the size of the blocks in the day. So are you anticipating any kind of, maybe kind of issues or problems with it?
We will have to for sure pay attention to what's happening around it and within the entire schedule. We'll have to look at how that embeds. But realistically, it's not going to be any different than taking an hour of English and an hour of social studies. You're just going to have to be careful as to how we place those, those teachers.
They're not always back to back though in everybody's schedule, so.
Correct, that's where it'll have to be sort of deliberate on the part of the scheduling gurus in the high school in the counseling office to make sure that we have that set up. So it's, if you're not paying attention to how everything's going to fall out, it could be a problem. But if we're really careful as to how it's all laying out with teachers and, and students.
I just, I just don't want to reduce the student's ability to, to, you know, well, I'd really like to take this, but, you know, it's only offered first or second hour. And first and second hour is this two-hour class, so I can't take it at all, kind of thing. So it's, but.
Yeah.
Reduction of flexibility of the schedule.
Sure, yeah.
So we're, we're dropping four and adding ten?
He's moved on to science apparently.
That's not on the agenda, so you're good. This is your show.
So, yeah, we can move on. Um, yes, so now you have, so Kathy, do you have the, the charts?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks a little scary when you see drop, 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 drop. But there's some intentionality here, so. So you have the two now trajectories side by side. So what you're looking at here is you've got the, this year's the eighteen, nineteen and what we currently have running. And then down below is where the course proposals would then take us. So currently we have, we have our biology ninth grade, everyone's taken biology. And then we move through tenth, eleventh grade. We've got this honors track of chemistry and a concepts track of chemistry and an AP physics and a concepts of physics. And what, we had discussed this last year as well, those concepts classes were really getting to a place that we did not intend where they were becoming, it was becoming like true tracking. We were having high concentrations of special ed students in the concepts classes and, and that's not where we ever intended to go. So a lot of the drops are the concepts things. We're going to drop the concepts classes and sort of lay that out a little bit differently. So if you look at the, the table below, basically we've got that honors program in the little dotted line. Yeah, if you can zoom it. So the honors program is encased in that little dotted box because that's that overlay that we just talked about where we are going to offer that honors program opportunity for all students in that ninth grade. And then eventually we're going to have that over in the tenth grade as well. Ninth grade, still biology is biology with the honors program there. Tenth grade, we're removing the word honors and we're going to replace that with an accelerated chemistry course. And the accelerated chemistry course is going to be similar in thinking. It's going to be for the students that are really on a track to maybe go a bit deeper with their chemistry studies as they move through the, their four-year plan.
Can I pause you a second?
Yes, sure.
Can you talk about process? How did you get to, how did you arrive at this place for these suggestions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like you sat in your office all day and just said, hey, we need to do this?
Yeah, no, I didn't sit in my office all day and come up with these ideas. We've been meeting and you'll hear more next time too because we have, this is not all of the course proposals. So we've got a few more coming. But we've been sitting with teachers and department heads and saying, you know, where are we now and what would we like to see? And, you know, what kinds of things do we have to walk away from? What kinds of things do we want to keep as we make some changes? So, yeah, so we've been sitting with teacher teams, thank you for bringing that up. We've been sitting with teacher teams and so the science department has been largely influential in, in coming up with the ideas of these.
And so this changed specifically, we also looked at our AP data. Our AP chemistry scores are not what we'd like them. And so talking with the teachers, they also agreed they're not where they would like them. So part of the reason is that in the current honors chemistry, it wasn't necessarily saying this is sort of the precursor to AP chemistry. So it will be a lot more intentional in terms of accelerated chemistry to better prepare students for AP chemistry and not just put the label honors chemistry on it. So, and that was really coming from science teachers because none of us are really excited about that. So being very intentional about that. And you'll see that throughout, that the actual data was used in, in terms of student achievement data, starting backwards, whether it was AP or ACT data. Talking with the teachers also saying, yeah, we can improve that and these are some of the ways of doing that. So I wanted to put that out there, that people might wonder, how do we come up with this or how do we land here? There, there's actually a lot of stuff that goes behind before it actually arrives here.
So are you getting, eventually getting rid of all honors blank labels? Like honors chemistry, honors whatever? Is that the eventual goal?
Yep, so we're going to replace the honors program and we're going to go with these accelerated courses that are going to be more of the preparing for the AP.
So there won't be anything called honors anything anymore other than the? So there won't be anything called honors, anything anymore, other than the?
The program itself?
Honors, yeah. Otherwise, you could just call accelerated chemistry honors chemistry and just, you're just keeping the label and changing the course to what you wanted it to be.
Except for that the honors designation was not getting us anywhere because we, we really couldn't differentiate in many cases, not just science. The difference between honors, say here, chemistry and regular chemistry, we really didn't understand what some of the differences, teachers included. They, they couldn't really talk about. Accelerated chemistry is going to be just, this chemistry is going to be really looking to move over to that AP chemistry and making sure that students are on track and doing, and being better prepared for that AP chemistry.
So you can't do that and call it honors?
Probably could, but we.
Cause it seems to me that that's what the idea was with the honors thing anyway, was to prep them for, uh, an AP class. So now you're saying, well, the honors label ended up just being a label, but this class is going to.
And I would say, John, that that's a, that you might, we have a lot of other honors cla, honors labeled classes right now that don't lead to an AP class. And that's, that's the part of it. If you look at all, a lot of the lists, we have some AP, or excuse me, we have some honors world language classes, for example, or honors this or that. Their goal is not to prepare students for an AP one. So to write, we have this like menu of whatever it is, so to try to get out of that. The other part of it is also, uh, chemistry is just one of those examples that they were not getting enough of the content. College Board says that you have to, they're very specific. In fact, I have to sign my name off that we will provide X number of hours of lab in AP chemistry as a district. We have to guarantee that. And part of it is that, that's a lot of stuff to get into that. And we're not sure that we were getting through enough of it prior to those students getting into it. So, um, to your question, could have we just kept the honors label in terms of it?
Which mean, which kind of has a, an, a pre-known meaning on a transcript, but yeah.
And I don't know that, and when you talk to colleges, I don't know that they look at accelerated different, I mean, they don't say like, oh, honors is better than accelerated. They both know that they lead to that piece of it. And in order for us to really truly make a difference inside the content, because we have other courses that don't necessarily lead to AP, this is the way of transitioning it. To also, to let the students know that you might have to go at a faster pace. Pace is also part of this.
They should have known that when they took honors, but okay. Thanks.
How fluid are they going to be? So if you started out in chemistry and you're bored to tears, then how easily can you switch into accelerated chemistry? Or if you're in accelerated chemistry and even though you love the course, you're struggling, what kind of support is there going to be?
And that was a big part of our discussion within that. So, yes, it's meant to be very fluid because you're right. You could get into chemistry and say, I am not a chemistry person. So if you took chemistry and you decided that's not where you're going, it is going to be very fluid where you could jump down into the accelerated physics or the physics track, you know, and decide where you want to go there. And then both of those courses, accelerated physics is really gearing you for that AP physics C, which is there. And physics itself could also bump you up there, or it could bump you if you decide you want to go AP bio. I mean, so the, the department really sat and said, this would be the way to, to go for sure. So Jamie's here too, and Jamie, Jamie's dying to talk. I can feel her.
So, um, I think that if a student is.
Wait, wait, maybe, wait.
You are.
Introduce yourself.
Okay.
You can come up here, it's okay.
I would rather sit back, but, okay. So I'm Jamie Gorick. I'm the new chemistry teacher here. Um, and I'm also working on my curriculum director, um, at Cardinal Stretch. So I've worked on this. I've worked at Tosa West and their curriculum, as well as at Pius with their, um, physical science curriculum. They just inserted this year. So, um, as for your question of how like they move, so if a student's taking regular chem, they're not in accelerated, it's going to be in an earth system base. So we'll sit and we'll talk about chemistry and how it applies to earth. So you're not really getting just, you're getting atoms and protons and you're getting the basis of it, but it's also going to be applied to the earth. So it's going to give more content or interesting topics for students that might not be chem-focused. Then if they are chem-focused and maybe they just didn't have the math background to be in accelerated or weren't ready for accelerated, they would then go into accelerated chem to get that in-depth knowledge in order to prepare them for AP if that's the route they want to go. If that's not the route they want to go, then they could just take physics. And it would be more of a conceptual, project-based physics course. So if they're not interested in that, they're just, I need to get my physics credit, that, that's what they would be able to do. Now, if they want to go, like, nope, I want to go into physics, engineering's my goal, then now they can take accelerated physics and/or AP, um, physics C if they need to. So it would really be a progression for students. And it's also going to help them determine, um, if they don't have the math skill, they don't want to go into science, it's going to give them more basis of like, hey, this is what science could be. Like, I didn't know that I could be working on, for CG SMIT, looking at, um, the ground, you know, densities or soil construction or anything like that. And that's one thing we are missing from NGSS and the Wisconsin State Standards is that environmental and that earth science, um, standards. So I think this is.
NGSS is an acronym.
Sorry, National, the National, or Next Generation Science Standards. And then those are like 99% accurate with the Wisconsin State, so they're very similar. So I think we're, it's, there's a huge lapse that we're missing with that.
We've been, we've been late on those.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Um, we're missing that whole earth. And I think the chem is going to come up if we have chem earth and it's going to provide that background for students. Then, you know, you have, we have a huge construction project going on. And if you noticed, half of those would have been earth science stuff, looking at the soils and concrete and all that. So I think that's something that we're missing here. Um, and we're going to hopefully add it with that chem course.
Any other question?
So a student can go midstream. So if they're three weeks into the regular chemistry class.
Yeah.
They could pop into accelerated.
Definitely. Cause the first three weeks is talking about usually measurement. And then you're talking about like the structure of an atom. So that would be in the same in both. Um, they might just have to pick up on significant figures. That's something we wouldn't talk about in regular chemistry with the earth. Um, it's just not as important. But if you were in the upper level sciences, it is.
And you heard Jamie mention, you know, the math component in there. And that's one thing that we have found moving forward is that our students don't always have the math to back up the science. And so this is where the, if you look down on that, that lower track, it says integrated physics, chem, math. That is a course that's going to be designed for students that really want to be more tied with the math and the physics and the chem together. So that's, again, one of those integrated approaches to strengthen all three simultaneously and make sure that the math skills are directly matching with the science.
Yes.
So, um, this isn't going to happen until next school year, correct?
Yeah.
And so we would miss the CG SMIT pieces, cause they'll be out of here, right?
They will.
But we can get some soil samples and keep on.
Okay.
Um, so, so the other piece of this then too is, is we're, we're moving through. So you can see everything, you know, moving from, from left to right, from ninth through 12th grade. Um, we've got, so we've got a, a depth for really as, as many kid, different kids we have coming through. They really can tailor this to what they need and we can help them decide what they need. Um, some of the other drops and adds that you were seeing too is just looking at some of our, um, electives. We're going to add in some elective things. And one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to take the, um, anatomy and physiology course that currently runs for one year. Um, it more typically runs for a semester class, so we're going to look to go with transcripted credit with that and do it as a semester class. Whether we can get that done for next year or not, we're not sure. That's what's noted in here, that, that might not be able to run in that format until the year following, because we're not sure how quickly you can turn that piece around. We are also going to.
What's transcripted credit is?
Um, getting, getting college credit for the.
At.
So?
Oh, ATEC, we don't know which one though.
Correct.
Yeah, so at a technical college, yeah. But we're not sure who we're going with it and who it is at this point.
So that's the one that's, that's proposed to change from 1.0 to 0.5?
Correct.
Why, why the change?
Because it typically, if you're going to go with the transcripted credit and go with the, the technical college course, it is a one semester course.
So right now, it's not transcripted post-secondary students who take, so right, right now, our AP classes, kids who go onto a four-year university would get some science credit. Human anatomy right now, whatever it was decided here, is a full year. As a semester, if it follows the technical college curriculum, the students can get those three credits from the human anatomy. So it, it may have a more rigorous flavor to it for a semester, but students actually will get that, um, that post-secondary credit for those who might be going on to a two-year technical college. Um, and so that gives them, it aligns that curriculum in terms of what that looks like.
Could it apply to a four-year program too?
Absolutely, because of that associate degree, which is the benefit of.
If they take it.
Correct. And the other beautiful part about that, I think Jamie alluded to it as we've been talking with the science teachers, is that we haven't really provided a fourth year of science options for students who aren't AP-bound. And so a lot of them drop out after their third year of science. If they aren't a human anatomy and physiology person, there is, there has been nothing else for us. We have a school forest. We have a lot of other options for those kids to take. So that's why you'll see those couple other, um, options there. So by making that a rigorous semester and getting post-secondary credit for it, it also gives them the option to take a look at, um, another half-credit of science, so they can explore more, more sciences that they haven't currently been able to, and environmental and potentially adding an earth science then after that. A more balanced science program overall, um, I guess I would say. And still adding rigor to the program simult, simultaneously.
And then we're also looking to add an environmental science, um, half-credit environmental science, which again, we have a school forest and we've had a lot of interest in environmental studies and had, have had no outlet for students with that. And then a scientific research and project development course where students can really engage deeply in sort of the hands-on, the inquiry, the research and take on projects. And that would be a course that they could repeat if they wanted to continue and go deeper with their research. If they took it one semester, they could take it again another semester. Um, the teachers were talking about, they would like students to submit proposals for their research prior to, uh, the course starting. So they've got some, some great ideas for, for that as well.
Research costs money. So, I mean, I think at pretty much any level, it's going to cost some money. I know it's a high school class, but there's going to be money involved. Do you know where that's going to come from? Or do you have any ideas of where to get that? Are we talking big fees for the class?
So, um, the programs we've been looking at and kind of the research we've been looking at are some programs that are actually provided from outside re, so like the National Science Fund. Um, do you remember the elephant one?
Uh, no, but one of our AP physics teacher currently, Mr. Parity, he actually does, um, research through Cornell University where they take sounds from Africa and they work some scientific magic and figure out how many elephants there are. I'm really glad that was on camera and I just called it scientific magic. Uh, but previously, we've had, uh, teams of students compete in the beam line for schools competition, um, through the certain laboratories. That could be something that kids work on. Um, there's groups right now working through the Samsung SOL project. Um, they have these really ambitious ideas. And a lot of this right now is taking place after school. So just kind of giving, um, the students and at least one teacher a place to say, this is important. Let's, let's designate some time and attention to this. But yeah, there's a lot of stuff. I think there's rocket building competitions and crystal growing competitions. So as long as the kids have a feasible idea, um, if they're trying to build a nuclear reactor, I might have to get approval from the FBI, but, you know, I, there's lots of that.
I also want to say and point out that colleges are looking for students to start applying and doing research and having research published. So I think MIT, one of their distinguishing factors is have you had your name put on a paper? And we, if we don't have something for students to at least do research, they're never going to get to that point. So we have to start making these connections, like having either a smart team or, um, connecting with, uh, other resources. So there's, um, the Green Bank Satellite in, uh, West Virginia, looking at astronomy and radio, um, data. But if you're able to do these programs and you can find something or do the research and get your name on it, it distinguishes you when you go into a science program for college.
And the smart team is a protein modeling team?
Yeah, sorry.
It's really funny that it's called a smart team, but it's the actual acronym they can help them with.
Yes, so.
You'd mentioned CERN and, um, my son was involved in that. And, I mean, you're talking high-level stuff. There wasn't an exorbitant cost related to it. I mean, it was part of this group, big competition. They got to go to Madison to work with the Madison team. I mean, it was, and like you said, it was only after school. Having the ability to do it during school, additional time after school, it would be a great opportunity for them.
So has, uh, have you given any thought to, uh, connecting with researchers even at, um, the Medical College of Wisconsin and Madison and those kind of things? I mean, I was, I was 12 when I was working on a research project at a university.
So there's like the Supremes with Marquette. So you'd be working with Marquette and the medical college. Those are programs that we just need to start posting for students. But this is, gives kids, students an outlook or a place to go, knowing that there's these programs for them. So like the Supremes program, um, if we get students to do that, it's a half-day program. So half of their day is spent at the medical college and at Marquette. So there's a little bit more that has to go in as well with planning and their classes. But there's a lot of programs, but at the moment, we don't have a place for students to be able to go to find them or to get more information on. Whereas if we had a separate class where they started going into it and started looking and researching it, they would have that ability. So if I, like, um, at Pius, we had two students do Supremes. Um, and so they worked on, they were isolating a protein. Um, and so they were able then to do that. And they did it, I believe they left during, right after lunch. And they were able to get then a credit for it. So they might have to leave after lunch, they'd be in this class, and that would be their credit for it as well. So I think there's a lot of opportunities and there's not a lot of cost, but it's just getting those opportunities and then having students like, nope, I want to do this. I'm going to take this course in order to do it, is going to help them then do it. Provide them that outlook.
Any other questions? So then this will come forward next meeting. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a lot.
Miss Jamie.
Okay, on to seven, administrative reports and updates, the 2018-19 district goals, 45-day plans.
Kathy, you can go to the web seat, website and on the link.
Yep.
And, um, call up the goals. I'll do an intro and then you can have our audience member maybe to sign up for the break. Um, so this is, uh, this is the first time we're looking at, uh, our district goals and we created this, um, your 45-day plans to provide some accountability back to the board and reporting out every five, 45 days rather than waiting till the end of the year and saying, here's where we are or not. It also helps us keep on track to see some things that, before we get too far down the road, like, oh, we didn't do that, we did do that, and we did some things we didn't plan on. And so, um, for anybody who wants, our 45-day plans are on our website, under our, um, strategic visioning. You can click on them. They're Google Docs and you can see what, um, so they're divided into four cycles. Um, so anybody in the community can see where we are in the progress of that. So, um, tonight, uh, we have our directors who will be, um, who are overseeing, um, a couple of goals themselves. And they will report out on that and the work that's being done. So we'll sort of have a team approach to that, um, in terms of what those are, um, specifically of each of the eight goals. But before that, do you want to take the audience member or afterward?
Yeah, um, Nicholas? Yeah, if you want to come up here, it's actually to the podium or wherever, just say your name and your address, cause it'll fit in with this, so yeah.
Hello, everybody. I'm Nicholas Olson. I graduated from the district in 2014. Um, I came here to talk about, um, I believe it's the trade and apprentice exposition that's occurring here at the district. I saw somewhere, I think on Facebook or something while I was, uh, scrolling through during lunch and I decided it's important enough to come talk about. Um, I graduated in 2014, like I said, and immediately rolled at UWM, pursuing a double major in biology and conservation environmental science. I'm very glad I did that. But, um, to help offset some of the cost of tuition, I saw multiple forms of employment, which included some skilled trade positions, including, um, commercial fireproofing, um, tile setting. And I'm currently a heavy automotive mechanic as well. Um, when I was here at high school, I didn't really, um, receive much exposure to trades or apprenticeships or any kind of other forms of employment. I mean, it was briefly brought up, but I'm really glad to see the district is pursuing some events and possible opportunities for students to seek other forms of careers after high school that aren't college. Um, I know a lot of my friends that I met at university also kind of felt the same way, that we didn't exactly, uh, see the full spectrum of what was available to us after high school. And I'm very glad to see that this school district is, um, actively trying to seek other options for students that aren't just, um, university or not sure what else, you know? Um, that being said, I'm very glad that the district is seeking these opportunities and I hope they continue to as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, goal one, I'm, do you want, I thought, do you need permission? I forgot, we're at that point, we're.
Okay, you are, yeah, right.
We've already introduced it, so you guys, so Lynn has goal one. Um, so if you want to, you can click on that link that was in your board packet if you want to take a look at each of those too, or, or I'll have Kathy put those, um, no, it was a link in the, in the, um, actual.
It's in the board.
It's in the board packet? Yeah, it'll say there. It'll take you to, yep. So anybody from the public also can click on it in the board packet and take a look at that, so.
So goal number one, um, was to develop learner profiles for every student in the district. And the way we got there was we've been talking for the last few years about how do we personalize learning experiences for our students? And how do we make the learning, learning in everything? And how do we make the learning, learning in everything that students do personalized to them? As we're finding out, we are expecting every student to achieve at high levels and we have found that as a system, we are not historically good at trying to find every kid's strength all the time. So one of the answers that research has come up with for the last 20 years is that if you can find ways to personalize those experiences for kids and figure out what hooks them, figure out what motivates them, their learning will be much deeper. They'll be much more willing to learn, engaged in learning and really passionate about it. So we've talked for the last few years as a district about, well, let's personalize learning, let's personalize, let's personalize. And it's a really strange thing to talk about because in fact, in theory, you know that it's good and in practice, you just don't know how to start or how to get there. So we sent a team to the Personalized Learning Institute last year and had this team, you know, ask, it was a team of teachers, and we said, you know, what could be our, our really district-wide personalized learning attempt? And the Personalized Learning Institute has a model in which the very center is the learner profile. And if you can get students to really know themselves as learners, if you can really know your students as learners and know what really makes them tick and allow them to be, you know, have a hand in the learning process and a hand in guiding their own learning, you will have a much more rich and fruitful experience with the educational system as a whole. So we decided with that team that we would say learner profiles is going to be our district-wide attempt at personalizing learning. So we took this team, we thought, okay, if we do this, we're going to do this at a K-12 level. The people at the Personalized Learning Institute said, wow, that's pretty ambitious. Let us know how that turns out because that seems like a big-scale project. Most personalizing efforts are happening at a school basis or a classroom basis. We're going to go to K-12 with this. So we spent the summer figuring out how do we do it? And we made learner profiles for every student. We had the teacher team sit together and look at what's developmentally appropriate for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. So each grade level has a personalized learning, learner profile template. So what we did is we created a Google Classroom for every graduation year. And so now every student in the district has a learner profile. In the bottom of this, you can click on, there's like a, there's a link to go to what the learner profiles look like so you can sort of see what they're, what they're looking like. So in August, we rolled out the learner profiles, showed staff this is what they look like. This is how we're going to get them in the hands of all the teachers and how the teachers are going to get them in the hands of the students. And then we're gradually having students add information into these learner profiles as the year goes on. Are we not finding the?
Yeah, but you can't, yeah, but from here you can't click.
So yeah, so this is just visual examples of what it looks like. So it's, that's just screenshots. The thing that she's got there is just screenshots, yeah. So all of those hyperlinks that you saw up there, that's all the folders by graduation year. So when you click on one of those, what you will see is 200 different profiles of all the student names and you can click on one and see. Down below is what the templates look like. So this is what the student looks like, looks at. They fill in the about me, this is what I enjoy, this is what I look for in people, it's what I look for in myself, what I want people to know about me. And then there's tabs along the bottom. So each learner profile has several, several different sheets to it. And again, they vary a bit from level to level. So they start out more visual and more hands-on in the kindergarten and first grade levels. And then as you get into second grade, third grade, et cetera, they become a little more complex. By the time you're in high school, they're including some academic and career planning. They're working on some SMART goals, they're working on some post-secondary goals. And the idea is, we've started off right now with just getting students to look at the about me parts. If there's a personal statement tab, depending on their grade level, they're writing a little personal statement about who they believe themselves to be as a learner. And teachers are working with students in advisory times and Falcon times to fill these out as the year goes on. By the end of the year, we've set dates, as you can see, our first step was just to create the templates and figure out, you know, the grade bands, make sure that they were developmentally appropriate. The big task as far as the tangible things is really figuring out how do we make, you know, a couple thousand learner profiles and put them in a place where they can be easily accessed and not wrecked and damaged and lost. And we've already had a few things, you know, go wrong that way, but we're tweaking them. So now we're, we're really looking at how do we access? You'll notice that there's one non-green checkmark there. We, and that's just the inconsistency part. We've got some people that have accessed with their students and some people that have not yet accessed all the, all the areas. We've established a formal update process and when we're going to check in and where we're going to have some formal updates. And then we are asking teachers to engage. I'm going.
The 45-day plan, I should just let you know, we've decided to color-code them off to the left after we do those. So green mean that we actually did that step, red mean like we did, something got in the way for some reason. And then you will see in some of them, we actually added some steps. So we sort of create a little dashboard in terms of the activities or in terms of which of those steps we had planned for in each of the cycles. So I probably should start with a little legendary key, so. Jack, you have goal two?
I have goal two.
Okay.
Goal two was really around developing an action plan for our social-emotional learning and to have that be a multi-year plan and collaborate with not only our staff but also with our families and with the community. So cycle one was really about creating some baseline information for us through the use of a survey tool, which is the 40 developmental assets. From there, we have been working hard and through this, actually last year even, starting to look at curriculums that are out there. We selected a curriculum that did not have a large cost to it, but contained materials that would be available K-12 so that we had the span and we were able to use their scope and sequence. But keeping at a lower cost allows us to continue to look at things after we have this assessment data and not be committed to a program that, you know, costs the district lots of money on an annual basis. So what we purchased comes in a kit, it's ours, there's no additional cost after this year. At the elementary level, we did an inventory on our last professional development day to kind of see, we know especially at the elementary level, that teachers have been engaged in activities longstanding that address, you know, the needs of students. So we're trying to get a good inventory of what those are so that we can fit them into the units that we've selected and not put those, you know, not give up on those and over time, share them across grade levels so that it's not just that teacher who has access to them, but rather we're giving everyone access to those materials and kind of allowing us to, to expand what we're offering. So at the elementary level, the lessons will be required once a week. And then teachers have an opportunity, if they want to extend learning, if it fits into their other coursework, they can. At the middle school, they will be using it during advisory twice a week. Their time is a little bit shorter, so they may need two days to actually complete the lesson. And then at the high school level, we'll be infusing them into our ninth graders. So they'll get that initial introduction to the lessons. We do have some social-emotional lessons that will continue during Falcon time for all of the students, but these particular lessons will be targeted to our freshman students. And, and then of course, we're always looking to build on the knowledge that our staff members have. So at our August launch, we had a session that, that related back to our safety grant and requirement there to present our staff with more information about trauma-responsive practices. So we had a session last year, we had a follow-up session, very popular with the staff, lots of great feedback. And through the second part of the safety grant, we have an opportunity to continue working with that presenter and helping us to develop that multi-year plan.
And the curriculum is from, I think it's an interesting.
Oh, it's from Lions Quest, so, which is associated with the Lions Club. And so we had an opportunity to also connect with our local Lions Club and how they can support. They hadn't done a lot with the curriculum yet, so we've been kind of sharing information about what it means, but there are opportunities for them to connect with us.
Number three, number three is our literacy plan. So we are, by the end of this year, we are going to be developing a multi-year literacy action plan to ensure student growth and literacy across the district. So we have started this out in our first cycle in creating common look-for documents to be shared between administrators and teachers and paraprofessionals to really deeply understand the best practices and the things, instructional strategies, et cetera, that we would like to be seeing in classrooms to support good literacy instruction. These documents are sort of laid out in checklist form and principals have them and coaches have them and teachers have them. And there's a lot of discussion and coaching right now with teachers that's going on around those documents so that they can, they just have some common language and some common understandings. We have really worked hard to coordinate the consistency pieces between buildings when we are talking about literacy practices, what's happening in one building should be happening in the other. When we're talking about like building-level meetings, we're really trying to stay tight to the consistent language that we're using when we're talking about those expectations. And we're really also looking to develop literacy applications documents for all content areas. We were hoping to roll that out this, this fall, but we kind of got bogged down with some other things. So we're going to wait until cycle two for that. What I mean by that is just really getting FIAID teachers and art teachers and science teachers to deeply understand where does literacy intersect with your content area rather than thinking somebody else is teaching literacy. And then when they come to me, I don't have to teach any literacy because they're getting it somewhere else. It's embedded in all the content areas and there's commonalities and common threads of being able to teach literacy and use literacy strategy, strategies across all content areas. Principals have been working in their buildings to also, so when you see the color coding, you've got the blue and the gold. So the blue is denoting K, K-five is blue and then six through 12 is gold. So you see some differences that are happening there just depending upon the level. So they're adding into this document as well.
Or goal four, the. Looking at the facility plan, the 10-year facility plan, which is done in 2015, 16. Right now Todd and I are, we're analyzing that document, taking the good, because there's a lot of good that was in it, taking a look at the lists that were in there. And obviously we'll have to update those lists with the referendum being passed. As the scope of the referendum is still being finalized right through each of these different bidding rounds, that'll help us to determine what is the cost of them. Really, the bulk of the work will be putting together a funding source for those pieces. That'll come within the cycle, so right now we're just putting down the current plan and keeping the pieces revamped. They won't be revamped. Goal five is related to our hiring practices. Karen and I are pretty excited about this one. It's a, it's a kind of a different thing that we're trying to accomplish and how to really bring about skillful people through the hiring process and those who fit the Whitman old cultures we've come to define that over the past couple of years. And so Karen's done a great job of reaching out to both public and private companies, sectors, to see what they do and really what we're finding is we're doing something that's, that not a lot of people do, which is pre-screen and do a good job of thinking about that cultural piece when you're bringing your hires. Part of this will also involve, you know, making sure that the skills is across the board. It's not just educators, it's across the board hiring for all employee groups. So right now it's giving a lot of feedback and a lot of data and we're ready to get started to move very hard.
I have six, yes, I do. Somebody does. Goal six has to do with a two-way communication mode. So some of the activities we have put out there is to, we use that word crowdsourcing, which was a new word for, for some folks in terms of what that is. And so Logan and I have worked on this together in terms of researching crowdsourcing platforms. So we have some that are at no cost, up to some very high-cost options. So I think we have a good idea what options are out there. But really what we've been analyzing is in terms of our communication and talking to folks, it's fascinating. Different people have different preferences on how they receive it, right? So we have the connect that goes out to parents, yet we know that not all parents read it because sometimes the questions that we get asked were in that weekly connect. And so part of the question is, if they're not reading that and, you know, where are they getting the information? How do they get the correct information? And so we need to pull together a focus group, but there's a variety, you know, between social media or how people get that. We, right now, send out a massive email to all parents. We could have parents subscribe to it and then you can actually get some analytics as far as who is actually opening it and who is clicking on what links. The problem with that is as soon as a parent changes their email, you know, so we have over 3,600 emails right now that that goes to, we'd have to manage the email accounts that go with it to get that level of analytics because you'd have to opt-in in order to receive it. Right now it just comes through Infinite Campus and it has a link and everybody can get it. So, you know, communication is always something that we look at in terms of how do we get information and get that accurate information. I think Quinn had mentioned it when our student council, students were here. That's a really critical piece for all of our stakeholders. How do we exchange information? So the information that everybody has is the complete information, make the very best decisions. And that's what it is because if all of us on both sides aren't operating with the complete information, then the decisions that we're making aren't the best. So we're going to continue to look at this and decide with a focus group. And again, what we realize is that we could ask a certain group of parents what their preferred mode of communication is and it won't be the same answer than a different group of parents, right? You know, so that, that's the overall challenge with today's, and we were at the School Public Relations Association. That's the challenge that, you know, almost everybody has today in terms of that, where people get their feedback or their information and, and with, you know, social media and all of the other internet-based things, you know, where are people getting their information? And how do we make sure that, you know, the source of that is accurate in terms of that? So that's, I think, a huge challenge. I don't think we're going to actually be getting to the answer this year, but hopefully can make strides in that at least people feel that we do want to listen to them in terms of two-way communication. So that's goal six.
Six, Jack, you have seven?
I have seven.
Okay.
Seven really relates back to our academic and career planning and really focuses on adding external partnerships at each grade level. You'll see that we, we didn't quite hit everything that we wanted to in cycle one. And part of what we discovered as we started meeting with the counselors and really working on this was that we really needed to understand some of the things that have been done historically before we could decide how to move forward. So in writing the cycle, we probably needed more of their input as we kind of moved forward. But we've had some really great discussions. We are participating in a networking session. Through that networking session, we've been able to connect with other districts who are on their own journey with academic and career planning and been able to find out tools that they use. There's a really great tool in Infinite Campus that New Berlin uses. So that's something that we'd really like to explore and ties into not only our learner profile work but also kind of that dashboard work that we want to do as a district. It kind of, what they're doing takes into account the individual student's dashboard. And also through that session, we connected with someone who helped the high school counselors. DPI has a structure to do a self-assessment. And so someone came out and worked with the counselors to go through that part, which will give us great information to be able to move forward into our next cycle and, and get more things done. But right now, in the goal, it's looking at, you know, actually implementing with two grade, a minimum of two grade levels this school year. And right now, we are sort of focused on the volunteering aspect and what that might look like at the elementary level, a middle school level and a high school level so that we kind of have a thread going through. So we're exploring those options.
I have goal eight then. Kathy, at the bottom of this, I actually have a link that probably makes more sense. So this had to do with our core values, how we start to look at those from the prospectus and how we move those forward. So I wanted to just capture, there's a link at the bottom of this. Kathy, can you go back up to the top? So the biggest part that we did this first cycle was go through our, actually unveiling of our branding and all of that campaign. And so these are just, if you hadn't been on social media, so we had our, our video that has over 7,000 views already in terms of that video that we created. And so we didn't, one of the added activities we did under here is we did not originally plan on creating a video to describe it, but then realized that we probably should in order to have people in their own words explain it. And, and so I think that that was pretty popular in terms of unveiling what that, what that meant. And then we had something that whole week that sort of tied into that whole, the. And then we had something that whole week that sort of tied into that whole, the theme of we're all in, in terms of unveiling what that is and moving forward. We do currently have our freshman academy students who are working on a project to define what it means for the core values, what it means to them. They've engaged in interviews with people and trying to take any level of that prospectus and trying to figure out what it means to them. And so they will be, I think, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, are they still planning doing a public presentation?
The first showing is the 19th, so the, for Thanksgiving and from there we'll choose out those that we'd like to bring forward.
So the board will actually get to see some of the top, from the freshman academy, those students will come and present in front of the board on November 26th to see how they took this project. There were some parameters, but they could take it in a couple of different directions and what they produced. And so you will have some of those student groups in front of you on the November 26th presentation. So what did those core values mean to them? What did, you know, they could each take a little bit different angles. So that's right now in terms of what that looks like. We will continue to develop this and unveil this and talk to community stakeholders in terms of all of this, but really our goal in this first cycle is to get it out there, unveil it. We did our Whitnall window, so the whole community saw what it was, but now it's just a matter of, of keeping it out there and involving various stakeholders in, in what it all was, so.
And with the "we're all in," it's not, it's not a announcement that we're done.
No.
We're finished, right? We're all in, we're done, we're good, we're moving on, right? It's more of a, we're collectively in this together to evolve, to get to where we need to be, right? Problem solved together, figure it out together. That it's not individual groups doing it, but that we're not a finished product. Like there's been some confusion where people think this means we're a finished product and we're, this is the start point, we're moving forward.
Yeah, and I think we tried to put that on social media, that when you create a vision, any company who has a vision, it's where you want to be when you get there. We're not claiming that we're all there yet, but if we don't put that vision that we want, that our goal is that every single person says that they feel like they have that sense of belonging, that's where we want to be. So you have to start somewhere by saying that. By no means have we said that we have all arrived yet and that every single person is there, but we are all in in terms of getting there and that someday when we can say that all stakeholders will feel like they, at no point have been alienated or don't feel part of a system. So I think that's why it's called our vision, not like where we are type of thing. So thanks for the clarification. So that's your first cycle report out of 45-day plans. I think our plan for the second cycle of those is to do more of a, in a workshop model also in January, so it could be a little bit more dialogue. We'll have been through two cycles at that point.
Good. Well Lynn, you don't want to do the breakdown of personnel costs?
No.
Thank you both. Okay. Nine. Seven B, breakdown of personnel costs.
All right, so I wanted to kind of bridge the gap between what we discussed last week, last week, last meeting with the micro credential survey and a discussion about, kind of tilted at the very end towards what do we want to do with, with that compensation piece in So, so I wanted to just kind of start out, I, I can't help myself but to give just a little bit of background. And that really begins with how we go about thinking about a budget to begin with before we actually jump into personnel costs. So really the, the, the budget is built around three, three major ideas around a triangle. You can really start with any one of the three expenditures, revenues and educational programs. And the reason I bring that up, you go to the next slide, is when you think about how schools have, you know, gone about getting revenue, for example, pre-1993, it was all about you could levy whatever you wanted to levy, right? As long as the community was behind what you were doing, you really focused around your educational programs and then the expenditures that would focus around that and to say, this is what we need to spend. And you might have tons of people out in the audience for the annual meeting instead of three, because this was really how high or how low is our levy going to be based on expenditures. In 1993, that changed, or in 1994, when revenue caps were introduced. Now it wasn't so much about, well, does our educational programming and the costs that associate that with, with whatever that is, that's what we're going to levy for. Now there was a real cap to it and you started to kind of switch your focus to, well, what are our revenues first versus our educational programming and, and educational costs that are associated with that? And then we know that in 2011, when those revenue caps got squished a little more, we really need to focus on the, the, a continued focus on revenues versus really anything else. And that really hasn't changed over the last seven or eight years where revenue is kind of what drives your educational programming and your educational costs associated with that. So as we move on, I just kind of wanted, yeah, go ahead, John.
So what was the right way to, I mean, what do you think is the right way to go about it? Just, I mean, worried about how much money we have to spend or worry about, you see what I mean? It seems like what you're saying is prior to 2011, it, we didn't first consider how much money we had to spend.
Right. But prior to, prior to 93, it was all about what are we trying to get across to our community from an educational programming point and can you support that levy?
Okay.
In 93 then, it kind of changed. You no longer, you couldn't just say we, the sky's the limit. The revenue limit was there. And so you could have educational programming, but at some point you have to cut off, right? You have to cut it off because your revenues were capped. And then, and 2011 just became a greater emphasis on making sure that those caps were, were in place. Better, I, I'm not going to go down that road, but I will just say the mind, the mindset had to shift. So when we talk about these limited revenues, which every district lives within, you want to think about those limited revenues and distribute them into different budgetary, what we're going to call pies, just because I made a bunch of pie graphs. And these pies are, are broken down into these different categories. And, and not only do you have these different pies, but you also have within those pies, a lot of competing interests, right? So facility upgrades are going to try to be competing with musical, you know, equipment upgrades and technology, right? You know, Chris is right here going, hey, he's in my office every, you know, couple weeks going, hey, what, what is our, what is, yeah, what does our expenditure look like? And then Chris leaves and maybe the buildings and grounds manager pops in and, and the same thing. And so these competing interests are there within each of these pies as well. And so you can kind of start to think about how we look at, at budgeting this out. Next slide, if you could. So just to give you, not, not to go through the annual meeting all over again, because nobody wants that, but to look at kind of how this breaks down, you know, a majority of education is salary and benefits. We are a service industry in which we are serving kids and that means having staff here to support students in their learning. And so that's why you have 76% of a school district's budget and sometimes more in case of other districts are going to be predominantly salaries and benefits. It's really then in that services and salaries, in which I kind of break that out a little more if you look at your own, you can kind of get the reading and see the words more. But each are broken down into, into different pies. Kathy, go to the next slide. This is taking a look at the, at the non-salary and benefit side. So that other 24% and really those competing interests that we talk about and a lot of those, and, and the reason I want to show this to you is because a lot of those are working within constraints. Every one of these budgets could use, you know, more dollars. As, as Todd would say with buildings and grounds, there's a lot of things that he'd like to accomplish. Same with Chris. The teaching and learning budget has been growing a little bit to kind of support teachers going to conferences, payouts for compensation for those conferences, things like that. Special education, you really can't move that very much. There's federal law that talks about you have to spend as much from one year as the next as you do, so that's not going anywhere. Transportation's a fixed cost. Substitutes, we kind of have a general trend of where that's going to be. Open enrollment is set, we cannot change those dollar amounts. So a lot of those non-salaries and benefits, as much as we want to think that we can shuffle dollars around, those budgets and those allocations are pretty tight already. Yeah.
Just something really fast, you said transportation is fixed. It's fixed in the concept that we have to pay for it. But if we needed to add another bus now, right? Then that money would have to come from one of these other sides.
Somewhere in there. Somewhere in there. It's got, it's got to come from somewhere. Correct. Thank you. Yep, all those things. So, you know, and, and each of the schools up there as well, I would, I'm sure the principals would tell you that they would like to see more dollars as well and all of those compet, just these competing interests that occur. And so not a lot of room to maneuver back and forth in these, in these different pieces. If you could, Kathy. So once we break down the other 76% of the budget, which is salaries and benefits, and again, a majority of salaries and benefits is salaries, 75, roughly 75% of the overall salaries and benefits pie is consumed by salaries. And then you have a lot of costs that really can't go anywhere, right? WRS is the state Wisconsin retirement system, the pension system. State law dictates that teachers, or excuse me, staff have to pay half of their pension and the district has to pay the other half. This is state law, nothing can change that, it's set in stone. Obviously Fight Gun Medicare, we're not going to short that, little IRS. And then of course our medical costs, which we always try to keep under control, but you're going to see eight to nine percent increases on a year-to-year basis in your medical costs right off the bat if, if you're, if you're lucky. And then you've got some other minor components as well. And I kind of blew up just the little other part with salaries and benefits where we see retiree benefits and then some other benefits that don't even really register on the overall salary portion. That's why they come up as, as zero. So again, within this pie, there's only so much that can move back and forth. There has to be priorities and made between, in, in this pie. And some of them are simply fixed and some of them can move. You know, for example, can medical move? It, it could. Can, can dental move? It certainly could. It's only 1% of the budget. Retiree benefits, 1% of the budget. Those things you can move. It's, it's what is a priority within each of these pies. Moving on, I think I might be done with pies and moving on to bars. Kevin? So what I think is, what, what I think is interesting is that one, one of the, the pie pieces that we broke out and the other, and the other part was the retiree benefits. And what has often been a conversation piece about how to go about funding retiree benefits has been this idea that when a teacher leaves, traditionally districts bring on new hires. And those new hires are less than, are, are first-year teachers coming in at the very base salary. Simply put, that's not what is happening. And it's not happening here at Whitnall and it's not happening at many districts. So what you have up here is each of our new hires for this year, and the gray represents what they would come in at if they were a new teacher, 43.5, so it's pretty much a gray bar, the same size all the way across the graph. And then in the, whatever you call that color, that, that's their, their full salary or, or that amount that is above and beyond the 43.5. And so it's kind of broken up between elementary, middle school and a high school. And as you can see on the left-hand side, the elementary, the middle school, having a few more that are, are popping out, although that was where a majority of the hires were. And on the very right-hand side, the high school, you can see at the high school, very rarely are we, are we seeing or, or bringing in teachers as a first-year teacher. And that's for a number of reasons. There's, there's always a concern by the current staff about whether, you know, if a teacher leaves, we're bringing in a first-year teacher. Well, that's really not what's happening at Whitnall. We're bringing in fairly experienced teachers and bringing them in at, at compensation levels above and beyond a base salary of 43.5. I wanted to also, on the next slide, Kathy, I wanted to kind of break out, actually come back to this, go one more, I'll come back to this in a second. I, I also, I, I did want to give to the board kind of a breakdown of the new hire profile that we're finding, just give them, give you guys some averages to kind of look at and see. Again, you're not bringing in the, the, the new teachers necessarily all the time. You can see the averages between an elementary, middle school and high school teacher of where we're bringing them in salary-wise. The experience is pretty, is split pretty evenly across 10 years or more, between one and 10, and less than one year. And the less than one year is actually our, our lowest category that, that we brought in. And Karen in, in HR did a nice job of kind of breaking out really what were some of the questions that hires are asking about. And you're getting a, a really good array right in this year, in 18, 19, you're getting a good array of experience between first year, mid-career, and then more experienced teachers. And so majority of everyone's first question is, is typically, as you would imagine, what is my salary? And so that needs to be kind of the, the starting point that we need to have when we are trying to attract new teachers into our district is they're, they're rarely going beyond is, what is going to be my salary? In other words, one person for whatever reason asked, well, what's my start date? That was their first question. That's a nice, that's, I, you need to know, I guess, when you start and get to that. One asked about health insurance. Three asked about the salary structure itself, how are raises provided? And then the rest is all about, let's get down to the business of what is my salary going to be. Karen also denoted what were secondary questions. Predominantly, most of them asked about the salary structure. So I got my salary, now how do I get those increases? Where the second most asked about question was then health insurance. And very few asked about anything else beyond that. And so we kind of got a sense this year of really where are, this is all denoted with educators, really where are educators when they're looking at districts and looking at what is most desirable to them? What, what is drawing them into a particular district? And predominantly it's going to be that salary piece. Now, when that's, now we can go back to the previous side if you wouldn't mind, Kathy. So what this meant from a budgetary standpoint, and again, all this is coming back to, we're trying to draw the, the, the thing here from, you've got a compensation model, you want to be able to pay teachers, educators, you want to be able to pay them within the concepts of the model. Is there any room for any movement to increase the micro credential compensation model? So we had outgoing salaries this year of 1.843, you can read it up there. Incoming salaries came in at a little over, are about 1.75 million. We gave roughly $50,000 in what we would call market demand increases. A lot of that is simply retaining teachers who either got all their offers or, or showed market demands in, somewhere else in the area to warrant maybe a, a larger increase. And so we had to bring those out to retain strong teachers as there appears to be more and more movement in the educate, in the educational sector. We also had to do $146,000 in retiree payouts. So before we even hit base wage increases or the UAI that we call it, before we even paid out micro credentials, before we even took on the eight, eight to nine percent increase in that medical pie, we were already $95,000, if you want to call it in the whole, from one year to the next, just in bringing in new, different staff and, and retaining the, the current staff that they had because of the market structure that's kind of in place now, which is more fluid than it's ever been. So I bring all this up, if you go to the last slide, Kathy, just, just for the board to just be aware of this kind of new, I don't know if it's new, but at least we're relatively new, structure that we're finding ourselves in. And so there's a lot of budgetary constraints within that pie, within that salary and benefits pie. And, and so I just want to denote those and, and think about possibly some solutions. And just to keep some things in mind as we, we talk about potentially either increasing the micro credential compensation, whether that be within CPI or not, whatever that looks like. But these, these budgetary, budgetary constraints are very real. So the pre-2011 HRA obligations, this is that pay-as-you-go model that we have. We do have it, when I first came out in 2016, that dollar amount was a little over $450,000, I believe. It is down to about $150,000. We could get to a point here where we could pay that out and get that off as a budgetary constraint if surpluses occur or whatever the case is, to get that off and, and kind of be done with that portion of our lives. Our most recent retiree obligation was last year at this time, December 2017, which was a 20- done with that portion of our lives. Our most recent retiree obligation was last year at this time, December 2017, which was a $20,000 benefit. Again, that's a, if that was given to every educator, we'd be talking about a $4 million obligation moving forward, when that obligation has been decreasing and quite frankly freeing up more dollars for salaries than what we've been doing, just to keep that in mind. Our current active retiree obligations, so now, what we do have currently, we do, we did complete an actuarial study, our auditors and Moody's was very pleased. And what we do see on there is we do have a current obligation of about $488,000, that's on top of that pre-2011 HRA obligations. So that's hanging out there from what we have approved. You know, and then just some final pieces here, we do have loans out for our 10G bandwidth. If we could pay that off early, that frees up about $118,000 within our revenue limits. Where does that money go? What sort, what pie does that go into, or does it just increase every pie proportionally? We have to think about that. And then as always, this year will be, I mean, I say this every two years, but this year will be interesting as well, as we have a new governor, yet the same legislature in place. And so what will that mean from a biennium funding? I don't know. So that's why it is an uncertainty. What?
I thought you were going to tell us, I was waiting for this whole presentation, so you were going to tell us what it was going to be.
They are going to do? No, I don't have that.
I was hoping, that was a little tough.
Yeah, and so I don't, you know, usually even by now, in the business manager circles, which is a very haughty, you know, top-notch group, yeah.
As you say, guys.
Yeah, yeah, we're, you know, there's usually.
Hopefully not another report like this.
There's usually some sense about what is going to be coming up in a biennium, and there's been really zero talk, because I don't think anyone wants to embarrass themselves with any sort of predictions, so.
Zero talk and zero sense, you say?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So I don't know, I wanted to just lay this out there, if you have questions, we do want to come back with some sort of structure for our compensation model. Boy, when we first started this, there was more people here.
Mike, you're the only person that's.
Mike's the only one that's hanging. I appreciate that, Mike. Yeah, I appreciate that a lot, thank you. You know, I just, this is something that is a reality to the budgetary situation that we need to keep in mind, and like anywhere else within the salaries and benefits, there's going to have to be give and take if we want to put more money into salaries, it has to come from somewhere, or whatever the case be. So just some reality to the situation that I want to bridge the gap from last time, maybe to the next time.
So what would the benefit be to pay the $118,000 off?
So it's actually, it's a two and a half percent loan, and it's actually, it's over a $300,000 loan right now. And so it, the payment though, is within the revenue limit. And so what that does is that frees up dollars for elsewhere in the budget. That's the benefit. The benefit is to have freed up dollars, unlike the referendum, which is outside of the revenue limit, and once you pay that off, it's just gone. This is dollars that come back into the budget.
But you spend the money to pay it off, so you don't see the benefits of having it paid off until the next budget cycle.
Correct. So really, the idea here would be, with this particular loan, you have to alert the state by mid-March that you want to pay it off early. This would be something where in February, we are trending strongly towards a surplus, let's say health insurance costs are coming in low, and we go, this might be the time to pay this thing off. And then it would be in 1920 that you would see the benefit then, and to spread those dollars out somewhere else.
Thank you.
Quinn, you're welcome. I'm glad you enjoyed it.
I did.
I was a little disappointed at the blandness of the color scheme on the bars.
Yeah, I chose the black background, and they kind of filled that in for me, and I was going to change it, and then I just thought, John will be all right.
Not so much.
No questions, so this will come again in December, we'll get it again for the summer. All right, so on to eight, items for future consideration.
The Honor Society, I'd like to know how our structure ended up, or our parameters ended up the way it is for the Honor Society, if there's, and how do we change it, should we change it, who changes it, that kind of thing?
National Honor Society.
National Honor Society.
And what do you mean, parameters?
Well, I think now, our students are only members of the, can only become members of the National Honor Society, is it in their, is it in their senior year or something like that?
Junior and senior.
End of junior year, which is essentially senior year, so, but that's more restrictive than the, which is allowed, to be more restrictive than what the National Honor Society parameters are. But I just wonder why we are more restrictive than the National Honor Society parameters? I believe that it's either at the end of the freshman and the sophomore, that they say you could enter students into it. And I wonder if we're not, if there's a reason for being more restrictive, fine, I don't know, I'd just like to have the discussion, find out what's going on there, see if it's, if we do our students any service to, you know, enter them early.
Sure. Okay, all right. Anything else?
Okay, moving on to nine announcements. I'll have one, so regarding this fall sports recognitions, there's actually a printout in the board packet, labeling all the students, obviously, not all of them were here tonight, we recognize the ones that were here, but there is a listing on the website of all the accolades that are fall sport athletes. So congratulations again on a great season.
Katie Frank that sat there on the chair to our right was one of those on the list.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, the trades expo, which I think our community member spoke to, wanted to put that out. As you remember, last year, we partnered with a couple other districts to offer that summer institute for the building trades, for our students to get that, and so this is a continuation of working with that. And so we were picked as the site to host it, we were very conducive to what they want to do tomorrow, and we will be continuing that summer building trades institute through our summer school program for our students to take advantage of it. Again, it's the second week in June, as we continue a partnership with them and continue exposure with that. So that's tomorrow, which was announced, but I wanted to do that. So different schools go through at different times, so we're starting at about eight, eight o'clock, should be end by 2:30. So our students are being interspersed when the other school districts are, so if you're wanting to see, our students are just wanting to see any students in all of the different trades that are here, it's a matter of that, so. And the second thing is, Logan is getting out communication, we just want to make sure that the village was okay with us, and we're not preempting the planning commission meeting. But next Wednesday at 9:00 AM, we're having the official ceremonial groundbreaking at Hales Corners Elementary, so we can get that done, so they can actually start putting footings in the ground after their.
Bring your shovels.
No, C.D. Schmidt's bringing shovels and pads, so, so just wanted to announce that. But we're going to get something out to our public, hopefully tomorrow, after Logan does the flyer. We just need to make sure that the village and everybody was good with that ceremonial groundbreaking, so.
And so again, the meeting is, the planning commission meeting is next week, Monday?
Yeah, the planning commission meeting is next Monday night to get approval. We'll get building permits on Tuesday at 8:00 AM, when she's in the office, and.
They approve it?
Well, they approve it, yep, and we've been in communication with them. And then Wednesday ceremonial groundbreaking, and there we are.
Any other announcements? Okay, then move on to 10, I'll take a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851, after discuss specific individuals and their employment status.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Rule call for Quinn?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Jonathan? I, Kevin?
I.
John?
I.
Stephen?
I.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, have a great evening.